David point zero two one, this meeting will be conducted utilizing electronic means due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. Members of the public who wish to accept access this meeting via Zoom link may do so. Details regarding how to access the meeting are available on the district website at Pelican Rapids dot P twelve dot M N dot U S. And for opportunity to visitors to address the board, you may send comments to our Ripley at B R I P L E Y. At Pelican Rapids dot K twelve dot M N dot U S. We have everybody in attendance, so next up will be the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with unity and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Do we have anything we need to add or change on the agenda? Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Anne to approve the agenda. Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing no discussion on the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye. That's I suppose a better way to roll call, I'm sorry. Molly, on your. Brittany.
Hi.
Hi Brenda. Anne.
Hi.
And I. Then the carries. Opportunity for visitors to address the board. Nothing in the inbox. Okay. And we move on, we have a number of acknowledgements. Number of thank yous and appreciations here. Uh, thank you for the following retirees for their years of service, we have David Hogan, thirty four years. Clean Ghul fifteen years. And Chelsea Scram thirty one years. We have all state participant dance Megan Oki. We have all state honorable mention girls basketball Anna Stephenson and Greta Tolleson. An academic all state Rachel Guler girls basketball. Alien Ally Ivy girls basketball. Okay, I'll work boys basketball Anna Stephenson girls basketball. Mia Stewart girls basketball Greta Tolleson girls basketball. And we have all star game on April twenty fourth. Greta Tolleson will be starring in that. Congratulations on all them. Everybody want to say anything?
Uh, thank you to Mr. Hogan, this is Ghul and Mrs. Strand for all their years of teaching. They did a lot of work, not only in the classroom but outside of the classroom. And we appreciate all the years of service.
I would agree. Okay. We'll move on to administrative reports. Nelson with the elementary principal and activities director report.
Uh, enrollment April, we were at four thirty, so five from March enrollment. We now forty six students at this time, they're still distance boarding. Um, elementary meeting the other day with principals. Um, one of the discussions was um figuring out what those students are going to plan for next year. Uh, you know, and and we'll script that something to presentalize whether we have to offer distance boarding or not. That's still up for uh question. I feel like there's some language in the legislation about that, so um. We're hoping to get a feel for those students what their plans for next year. Uh kindergarten registration for next year. As of last week when I did this, we had sixty six in um four students are going to be retained. And seven students that we're still waiting on forms for um. Pretty sure four or five of those will be yeses, but we just haven't got the forms yet, the office yet. Uh state testing, we are starting tomorrow. Actually, they started today with distance orders. Distance orders came in today to do state testing. Uh, the other students grade three, four, five, and six will start state testing and reading tomorrow. And we have interviews going on, um, we have a lot of good applicants, we have twenty eight applicants for elementary position. Um, and a lot of good candidates there. So last weekend was the state or the section speech tournament. Rachel Guler played sport. And Chris Hupden was the champion. And so Chris will advance to the state tournament this Saturday. Um, it'll be done virtually of the state tournament, so congratulations to Chris for advancing to the state tournament. Also, congratulations state to the girls basketball team. On winning the back to back section eight double A championship and advancing to the state tournament. Um, when we look at activity fees. One thing we look to adjust for next year is having the students that qualify for free lunches. Would also get a free activity um. Fee for next year. Outdoor activities in the spring here um. At this point, and it could change anytime, but at this point. Uh masks are required for coaches, players, workers, fans. The only time you don't have to wear a mask if you're in an individual event. And you can keep your six feet of distance. So like, for example, if you're doing the high jump and track. You'd be by yourself, you could do that if you're doing the shot put. Um, those are events if you're by yourself doing it. Uh, this time while running events, we'll still have to have a mask though. Um, the state high school, you have sent a um letter to the department of health. Um, trying to get that changed, but at this point, nothing has changed as far as requirements. Um golf, golf once a. After their meeting and they go to their holes, then they could have their mask off as long as they're keeping that six feet distance. So. Um, new district football committee is working. Um, working on the new districts after the sections came out last week. Uh, the district committee met on Friday. They'll meet again tomorrow and Thursday. And then hopefully after that time, the districts will be made known who's in which district. Then it's up to each district to come out with the schedule, so like at this point, we have no. Schedule for football, we have no idea who could even be on our schedule possibly. So we don't know when homecoming is and that stuff because we don't even know who we're playing yet, so um. They said hopefully by the end of May, we will have a football schedule um in place, so. They want, they did it later this year, so it aligned more with the section alignments. Um, because some teams want to play more other section games. See some of their section teams in their district. And so they're trying something new, so it's uh later than normal, but um. After this last year, we learned that change can happen awfully fast, so. Um, so that will be coming. Um, been busy interviewing, but we've had a lot of good candidates and uh. I too would like to thank our um coaches, Mr. Hogan is retiring. Um, Mama Ghul is the National Honor Society. Um, and Mrs. Strand for all the work that she's done at the elementary, so. Like to thank those people for their years of service here at Pelican Rapids. Any questions, anything?
Okay, thank you. My ass reported. Mr. Martinez. All right, so yeah, month of March, pretty busy month. Uh, a lot of activity happening. Uh, we started our investment account with two point five million dollars. Uh, we received one point four million dollars in state aid and federal funds. Uh, the federal funds that we withdrew were our title money. So um, there are certain times throughout our fiscal year that we need to pull those uh title funds. Otherwise, the state come and knocks on your door and says, you gotta draw on. So that's why that most receipts are significantly high this month. Uh, from that, I withdrew nine hundred and eighty three thousand dollars to cover all of our expenses transferred to our checking account. Uh, at the end of the month, we had uh three million dollars seated in our investment. Uh, pretty comfortable uh cash on hand to have. Um, hopefully the interest rates and the stock market would be a little bit better that we could actually start making more money on interest, but right now. We are very limited on what we can invest our money on and uh not as high as return, not a lot of high returns. Uh, but um if there's ever any opportunity that comes in the near future, I'll. If there's any short term investment that we can do, I'll bring it up just so we can uh make additional funds in interest. Um, which is a very, very good strategy, I don't think, as a district we've ever, ever invested money from our investment account. Our O P E V account is going to finalize this month or uh this coming month. I'm going to withdraw the sixty four thousand dollars and eventually to pay the benefits that we paid throughout the year. Uh, O P E V is now completely exhausted from our master agreement, we paid out all of our our teachers that used to qualify for that benefit. So that will now go away, so in the future, you won't see a O P E V investment account anymore. Uh, at the end of the month, we had three point one million dollars uh in investment, very comfortable state to begin. In terms of the cash flow that moves through our general fund account. Uh, I always talk about the general fund account being in catch up every year. And you start to see that that shift here in the next couple of months. We started the general fund account with two point two, two hundred and seventy five thousand in the hole. Um, we received deposits out close to a million dollars, again, I withdrew nine eighty three from our investments, then brought it down here. Accounts payable were uh four hundred and sixty nine, this is all the bills that went through the general account. Uh payroll was two eighty seven. Um, this is an adjustment entry on how I received the money that goes into different funds. So you can see that out of the one or two that I took from the general fund. Ninety one thousand belonged to the food service and eleven thousand belonged to community ed. Um. For the most part, all of our sub accounts within the general fund look pretty good. Uh, we remain with three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars cash on hand. Um, again, uh, we're very efficient now on how we manage all of our, all of our cash flow throughout the month. Um, Minnesota national account, this is our petty petty cash account. Um, it's been very, very dormant this year as well. Um, we have twenty eight thousand dollars in there. Uh, we made one dollar and sixty three cents in interest uh for a total of twenty eight six eighty nine at the end of the month. Uh, student activity account started with a balance of one seventy three. Uh, they had deposits of three thousand um three thousand six hundred and seventy nine for uh ending balance of one hundred and seventy seven and forty nine cents. Uh, that is uh primarily the cash flow movement throughout the month. Uh, the majority of what I'll show you here in the next pages. Uh, again, it's the collateral report, so that shows that we have three point four, three point two million dollars in collateral insurance. So we're way below that, which is great. Uh, in terms of journal entries that I did this month to make the balance, uh, to make the books balance. I just two journal entries to make sure everything ties up. Um, very immaterial. And then the last three pages of the report, like always, it's all the payables. Um, if you guys have any questions about payables, uh, please let me know, I'll give you guys more details, but you guys can go ahead and uh. Go through everything that the district uh district spends its funds on. Um, in terms of, in terms of the business office, we are heavily into budget season. So we are doing this month and next month, finalizing the budget for the next coming years. We had the work session that we presented to you guys, we're sticking to plan. Also, this month, we did receive the letter from the union wanting to uh intent to negotiate. So we will address it and acknowledge it. Uh, one request that uh the lead union negotiator asked for is if we can uh negotiate earlier dates. Which personally for my, for the business office, I I agreed. Um, I think it'll be um the earlier we start, the the faster hopefully we finish, so. Uh, that is something that the board will have to talk about and we will form the committee. Um, so we can start setting up dates eventually, but. Uh, yeah, I would say if we can start negotiating with them, that would be wonderful. Um, the sooner the better. Other than that, that's what I have for you guys, any questions? All right, well, thank y'all. Thank you. Mr. Court, super lieutenant high school principal report.
Okay, our enrollment um. Recent enrollments, four hundred and thirteen at the high school, one thirteen students, or that year with four hundred and nineteen students. M C A testing, we have some skaters have math left, so we have math seven. Um, which will be this week, and then we have eighth grade science and tenth grade science left uh for M C A testing. Class registration, Mrs. Seebles, our school counselor is working with students in grades seven through eleven registering for classes for next year. She meets with uh each grade and uh talks. And goes to the classrooms and talks to them about uh schedules, answers questions about classes, things like that, and helps them plan for the future. Distance learning, we have forty five students right now that are full time distance learners, grades seven through twelve. Um, if you look at her numbers, they're most, most of the forty five students, the majority of forty five students are grades ten through twelve. Um, spring activities, this kind of dates that we have in place could change. Uh, right now prom is for May first, and I'll be in the leaders gymnasium. High school band concert will be on May fourth, and that will be in the leaders gymnasium. Um, high school choir concert will be on May twelfth, and that will be in the leaders gymnasium. And then we'll have graduation on May twenty eighth at seven P M, and right now it's planned for the leaders gymnasium at this time. High school openings, as you can see um on the agenda, we have um administration recommendation for a higher end math. Logan Nor, Logan Nor is currently teaching in Red Wing at this time. He went to the University of Minnesota. He has almost completed his masters. And then after his uh completion of his masters, he plans to get eighteen credits in the content area so he can teach college in the classroom. So um, a recommendation is to approve Logan Nor for high school math. Uh, high school social studies, right now we have two openings. Uh, we are recommending for, to fill one tonight, and that would be Cole Witzig. Uh, for social studies and head wrestling. Cole uh just recently graduated from N D S U. Um, where he completed his degree and he wrestled for five years on the N S U wrestling team. COVID dashboard update, just kind of a little bit of how things are going COVID related. Everything's been going, knock on wood, uh pretty well. Um, we've had a few staff, um, students quarantined in quarantine and a few positive, couple uh positive cases here over the last few weeks. Um, nothing like an outbreak or anything like that, so um. With what, twenty four days left, we're hoping that we can finish strong and we can have all our activities and not have to move anything or cancel anything, so. Uh, so far, so good. So I think that's about it with uh COVID numbers. Um, upcoming meetings, work session on May third, um, just with our hires. I'm thinking that we'll probably have to have a special meeting on that night, uh probably after the work session and to approve hires. And during the work session, we've talked about what our recommendations would be for new hires at that time, but over the next couple of weeks, we'll be filling some. Uh, hopefully the rest of the openings that we have. Questions, do you think? Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Court? Okay. Take the last down here. Next item up will be consent items. Item A, approve board meeting nets, March fifteenth, two thousand twenty one, regular meeting. B, financial claims and March bills, C, treasures report. D, accept donations for the student fan bus to the girls basketball state game. We have park region co-op, a hundred dollars. Spear Lakeside, one hundred dollars, Jason and Jess Fay, one hundred dollars. Larry supermarket, one hundred dollars, Minnesota National Bank, one hundred dollars. To the Tanner Markraph Scholarship, he has pumpkin patch, three hundred dollars. Dr. Edwin Richardson, O M P scholarship, he has pumpkin patch, six hundred dollars. To Al, Al Siegle scholarship of memory of Dwayne Strom, Monty and Lilo Baron, ten dollars. The scholarships in memory of Roger Bergren from Glenn and Colleen Markey, twenty dollars. The scholarships in memory of Beth Burquist, Glenn and Colleen Markey, twenty dollars. Viking Elementary in memory of Beth Burquist, Curtis and Lori Buck, twenty five dollars. The scholarships in memory of Beth Burquist. David Pat Hughesby, twenty dollars. Scholarships in memory of Beth Burquist, Richard Kathleen Nicholson. Twenty five dollars. Scholarships in memory of Beth Burquist, John and Bonnie McGregor, twenty dollars. The scholarships anonymous, twenty five hundred dollars. The Viking Elementary Activity Fund, Wells Fargo Giving Fund, five hundred dollars. P R H S Band Program, Mavis Fleming, two sets of rototoms, eight symbols. One thousand two hundred and sixty five dollars. Item E Personnel, approved resignation of Dan Beck as one point oh F T E P E and Health at P R H S. Pro resignation of Harold Holt as. One point oh F T E Social Studies and Coach at P R H S. Higher Madison Abar. A special education paraprof, paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Higher Courtney Thorson as special education paraprofessional at Viking Elementary. Higher Cole Witzig as one point oh F T E Social Studies Teacher and Head Wrestling Coach. Higher Logan Nor as one point oh F T E Mathematics Teacher. Item F, improve the adults' education agreement with Detroit Lakes Literacy Consortium Consortium for two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two. And G, acknowledged receipt of the notice and desire to negotiate from the Pelican Rapids Education Association. And some changes in personnel, already starting to take shape, so.
I'm going to accept the consent items listed in. Section seven of our agenda, that's just read by chairperson John Carter.
Motion by Greg, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the consent items? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and we'll do the roll call, Molly.
Hi.
Brittany.
Hi.
Greg.
Hi.
Brenda. Anne.
Hi.
And I, consent items carried. Next item up, business items, approve the retirement letter of Lisa Auron as elementary special education paraprofessional effective May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one. And I've got a letter here dated April first, two thousand twenty one, says, dear school board members and administration. At the end of this school year, May twenty seventh, two thousand twenty one, I'll be retiring from my position as special ed para. For twenty seven years, I have enjoyed being part of the school community. I've always thought I'd get a real job after my boys left the elementary school. But I realized working with children was my joy and passion. Thank you for the opportunity, and signed by Lisa Auron. Undertaking a motion.
Make a motion go through.
Motion by Brittany.
Second.
Second by Anne. Any discussion? Twenty seven years is, it's a while. Hearing no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, Molly.
Aye.
Brittany.
Aye.
Greg.
Aye.
Brenda. Anne.
Hi.
I, motion carries. Item B, approve the education, identity and access management board resolution. We have this. Sent to us, correct?
Yeah, boards on the website.
Yeah. E D I A M.
I'm going to approve the education, identity and access management board resolution.
Okay, we have a motion by Greg, do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion or any background on this? On the resolution?
What is it?
So this is um where I give permission for different people in the district to be in charge of different areas is what it is. So that would be my role to assign them and then M D E sends them like emails and if things need to be. Approved that they can approve it or Rudy and I approve it, so that's what this is all about right here. It's working with M D E.
Yeah, so it's actually what it is, Iowa is the ultimate authority signer first through a district. So we always assign Mr. Court to read every application, every grant, every report that we submit that states Mr. Court approves. We want to make sure that we do that every year. Okay, and it's not easy to switch. Unfortunately, when Dr. Ebich is in that way, we're trying to get Mr. Court. The Iowa consent, it was, we had to motorize papers, I mean, the whole, the whole thing. And to make sure we have this on file.
Okay, so it's a resolution. Do I need to read what's given?
I don't think you have to.
Okay. I guess I could read the first couple of sentences, so. Education, identity and access management board resolution, the Minnesota Department of Education. Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, otherwise known as Pels B. And the Office of Higher Education, O H E. Require annual designations of identified official with authority. I O W A for each local education agency that uses education, identity, access, management, E D I A M system. The I O W A is responsible for authorizing, reviewing, and recertifying user access. Through local education agency in accordance with the state of Minnesota enterprise identity and access management standard. Which states that all users, user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. I O W A will authorize user access to the state of Minnesota education secure systems in accordance with the user assigned. Users assigned job duties and will revoke that user's access when it's no longer needed to perform the job duty. School board equivalent governing board must designate an I O W A to authorize users access to state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota's secure websites for your organization. The E D I A M board resolution must be completed and submitted to the Minnesota Department of Health Ed. Minnesota Department of, excuse me, Education annually as well as any time there is a change in assignment of the identified official with authority. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, so this is a resolution, so Molly, how do you resolve?
Aye.
Brittany.
Yep.
Greg.
Aye.
Brenda.
Yes.
And Anne.
Yes.
And we ask, so the resolution carries. Okay, approve activity fees for two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. So. Motion by Greg.
All second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on the proposed activity fees or explanation?
Increases or decreases, or are they still the same in last year? The only one that would be a decrease would be the uh free, where kids are qualified for free lunches.
What were they paying, so they were paying zero, or if we approve this, it's zero.
What were they paying, so they were paying zero or if we approve this, it's zero dollars for those students? Otherwise, it was twenty dollars for nine through twelve and ten dollars for seven to eighteen. Do these activity fees, I always refer to it when Rudy goes through the budget. I think I've mentioned the Student Activity Fund, is that what it's called? Rudy, when you present, is there a?
No, so unfortunately, the activity fees that we're presenting today, those are, those go completely into the general fund. These are completely separate from student activity accounts.
So that's, but there is a Student Activity Fund, right? That's, that's what it's called?
Correct.
Okay, so activity fees don't enter into that fund, this goes into the general fund?
Correct, yeah.
And?
And essentially what it is, just to kind of give a little bit more background is, those activity fees help fund any overages and budgets that we have from sports. So, for example, we do have some sports that are generating, generating revenue because of those gate sales, because of those tournaments and because of those activity fees that come in. So a lot of the times, if we need to refinish equipment and football because helmets and hats are significantly expensive, the revenue that we get from the fees upset a lot of that.
And the, and the fees that are not needed to cover those costs that exceed the budget, where, where do those go, those get rolled over?
No, those get settled into the general fund and essentially what it is, it's paying the district almost for, for the space that the district provides, so think about it. Think about it that way, that the fees that get generated help pay for the lights.
Do, do the, the students and their families who are paying these fees, do they feel that, have you had any feedback with regard to it being too low, too high, right on? Or is there not much conversation usually when it comes to paying the activity fees? You know, we raised it here a couple years ago, um, to what it was and I have not had any feedback
from people saying that we should raise that anymore.
How about, you know, I know there's certain fundraisers that take place right now. To the best of my knowledge, there could be more, but I think baseball and softball are selling.
That goes into that activity fee that, or fund that you asked about. So like baseball goes into their activity fee, softball goes into their activity fee. Where the fee to pay the, for the sport goes into the general fund to help pay coaches, bussing officials, things like that.
If the activity fees were increased, would that lower the need for the fundraising that takes place through these different?
No.
So what, what I'm just, what the question I have then is so, so the fundraising component that's going on right now, those fees go into the Student Activity Fund.
Correct.
They don't get absorbed into the general fund potentially like the actual activity fee.
Correct.
So the idea behind the fundraising activities, which ultimately lead to funds going into the activity fund, the activity fund's purpose is to, those funds can only be used for those things that benefit the entire district community, so to speak, just in real general terms?
That's what we use by like, that's sports specific. So baseball raises money from these cards, maybe they have a need that they want new, um, netting stuff, they could take money out of that activity fund that they've raised and, or if they want to buy coats for the kids that they can have. So on like cold days like tomorrow, they have a baseball coat that it would stay in the, with the baseball tee, um, for them to use.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Does it seem the, the number, I'm assuming you've looked at this, saw the answer, I, I know will be yes, but the, the eighty dollars, the forty dollars, the zero dollar schedule seems to make sense in light of historically what the district has needed to offset in the sort of dollars that have exceeded what have been budgeted for the various extracurricular activities, activities?
Rudy? Repeat that question again, sorry, I was trying to.
I'm assuming there, there's, if you've broken that down into a formula to where you, what you anticipate the revenue being as a result of the activity fees with the eighty dollars, the forty dollar, and then the zero dollar activity fee depending on the lunch qualification for, for full pay, reduced and free lunch? There's some sort of formula used to determine?
No, not necessarily. We've tried to quantify, but unfortunately, that doesn't apply very, very completely as we want to. The reason why I say that is because, uh, just to kind of go back into, we always have to find a very delicate balance on how much fees we charge facing the community that we live in. If we raise the fee significantly high, so we could potentially say we're going to offset the amount of fundraising that we do, we're going to have less kids enrolling in sports. We do not want to do that. What we've done in the past, when we raised the pieces, we looked at all the districts around us to kind of get an idea of what they charge their students. However, no district is like us. We are considered a low-income district with a number of free and reduced students that we have in our school compared to Holly, compared to Ferguson, compared to Perrin. So we try to be very sensible to our families and our kids and we want to make sure that we offer something that we know that it's within their means, not to make money, but rather to make sure that the kid has a good experience and they're able to participate.
Thank you.
Any more discussion or questions? Okay, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor of approving the activity fees as listed for two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, signify by saying aye, this will be a roll call. Molly?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
Aye.
And I. Next item up will be approve of one point oh F T E elementary teacher position. Background on that, Rudy.
Just with the, uh, we're looking at the kindergarten first grade numbers for next year. Just looking at more class sizes for those grades. Uh, you know, both of them look like they're going to be over seventy kids per class, so, um, they'll look at other sections of.
Do we currently have one open elementary position, so then this would make the second, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah.
A couple of weeks ago, we had a work session and this is, I remember seeing a slide. I wrote the number twenty-three and twenty-four on it, were representing kind of two options as far as full-time elementary teachers.
No.
Approving this gets us to the twenty-three full-time Viking Elementary teachers if, assuming individuals get hired for those positions, is that right? It's kind of, it was either between one or two additional new positions.
No.
This relatively consistent with the option where we're approving the one additional position, right? Because there was another option.
So we hired two people instead of one.
But there wasn't, there was a second option, right? Just trying to remember whether that contemplated hiring.
Well, either one person or two.
Right, gotcha, alright, thank you.
And Rudy, this didn't have a significant impact to the budget, it was class that were absorbed by rearranging staff, incorrect?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. Um, I'm liking it, just I can show you guys, uh, just a little bit of that impact. But, uh, to Mr. Larson's point, I'll, I'll bring up the two and then I'll show you guys kind of where we are in terms of, of numbers. I'll jump in. Alright, yeah, so here is the graph that Mr. Larson was talking about. This is all we kind of put together and we presented at the workshop, just kind of get an idea of the few options and what we were looking into. Uh, today, we're asking for the additional F T E. Um, eventually, what we're trying to do is kind of marry, uh, the additional hires and then the staff at the elementary to make sure that we offer those low-class classes in the first and the first, fourth crucial years of a kid's development. And by Minnesota statute, we are entitled to provide world-class classes on like eighth, ninth, third grade. Uh, so Mr. Nelson and his work are strategizing that, uh, the two F T Es are not necessarily going to go to kindergarten and first grade. We have some staff that have the license to that cover those positions. That's why we also advertise the elementary, uh, position rather than primary or, uh, whatever the other turns out. So in terms of number, what we are hoping to do is between kindergarten and first grade, uh, put four staff members there that will bring the student ratio between fifteen to nineteen. So that's where we are, again, lower class sizes, um, but it's because it's there, it's needed. Uh, one of the things that Mr. Nelson found out is that due to the pandemic, especially those little kids coming in kindergarten and in the first grade, uh, they are requiring significantly more attention. We want to make sure we get dressed, all of those needs and also one of our goals is to make sure that we tell all of our kids ready to go to like third grade. So that is why we're making this investment. I'll pause here, Mr. Corcoran, if you guys want to add anything, please go ahead.
Yeah, that, I mean, if you look at, uh, I mean, the teacher will help us, uh, lower classes, which we will help, which will help, um, students with one of our goals of reading, um, by, yeah, by third grade. So I think that's a focus of ours. Plus, you know, when you look at needs of students too in the grade, um, that has an impact. If you have a high number of high needs, that gets to be very difficult, especially at a young age, so. Highly recommend, um, approving, hiring a professional teacher.
And just for clarification for me, I apologize for being redundant, but approving the, the one point oh full-time position tonight, that results in the, the green shaded area?
Yes.
So I think I was, I maybe misstated then, but we discussed that at our work session. I was under the impression that there was an option where we hired essentially three, um, full. One of, one of the, one of the positions that's, one, one position that's open is because of a retirement, correct?
A title position, the retirement title, so which is with that position and then the iPad money, that'll cover one position, one elementary position.
So the retirement of the title, one year. And then, uh, and then just opening up and, and, thank you.
And, and just to help clarify, this would be, don't get any more confused. So we are, are hiring, we are, we've already approved one F T E on the last board meeting. Tonight, we're asking for an additional F T E. In terms of how we're going to bind this bond, both positions is where the retirement of a title teacher helps that one of them. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, that helps a lot, thanks.
Yeah, wonderful. So, um, also in addition with our plan, I just want to be very clear that in terms of the long-range plan that we discuss with an administrative team is that we're making the investment for those two additional F T Es at the elementary. But as retirement happens, uh, or as new retirement happened down at the elementary, we might potentially not replace those retirements, but we will evaluate everything from class sizes to everything, folks. We have a long-range plan here, so at any point in time, if we see that it's too expensive rather than quality, we just will not replace that F T E. And we want to be very vocal about that as well. We'll add when it's necessary and then we just want that when we have them not add. Okay? Uh, just to help clarify, uh, here is the plan of, of everything that has happened and I think that the data is pretty used to see in this spreadsheet, but we, we're, we finalized the technology contract last time, which is phase three and green. We're now moving to phase four. So here, where Mr. Larson had, we finished paying off the iPad, uh, the title teacher retired, which we will not replace. And instead, we're going to take the money from that, both the eighty-four thousand dollars and invest in this F T E that you guys approved last time. So at the end of the day, title is going to consume all of one F T E for a teacher and it's not going to have an impact towards the general fund. Okay, financing was one heck of a deal for us. Tonight, you guys are approving an additional F T E that is here. Um, and again, our plan will work if and only when we hire teachers with less experience. Okay, well, this is where we are today. Last time, you guys also approved our position to increase to one F T E from point A three. You guys also approved the Spanish position to be, to be one point F T E rather than point five. And that is what we have for you guys in the map. Uh, tonight, you guys approved the resignation, uh, one of our secondary D E teachers. This one is still unknown, but I'm simply leaving it there at zeros. And then we have the best position at point five. So at the end of the day, we're still saving the district forty-five thousand dollars. Right, this is without adding any new expenses to our district based on the retirements, the turnover, the consolidation of contract. And it's a lot of moving parts, but we're still ending on the right side of the equation. Thanks for doing all of these, my dear.
The only thing I want to say is while I agree with the two hires and I know they're posted at elementary, I caution you of being too many teachers that are currently here too many times in different grades in fear of overwhelming individuals. That's my only concern, and that's based off of the charts that you would then follow.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve one point oh F T E teacher. Motion by Anna. Second by Brenda. Any more discussion on the elementary teacher position? No discussion, all those in favor approving the position, signify by saying aye, and we roll call again, Molly?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
And I'm an I. So that concludes the business items. We have upcoming meetings, we have a work session, May third, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. We need to make that a regular, can we make it a regular meeting or? Or a special meeting? Or we can call it if we need it?
We can call, as long as we post it, we do have time to look.
Okay. Thinking in case we have positions to approve. Okay. Regular meeting, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. We have a work session June seventh, six P M, and the regular meeting, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one at six.
Chairperson, this is a question for the board and administration. Do we need, as far as work sessions during the summer, are we planning on having those each month? I know that, that was the, uh, the route that was approved at the beginning of the year. I'm just curious to get anyone's thoughts on the necessity of work sessions over the summertime? I mean, I suppose there's always something that perhaps could be discussed, but anybody have any thoughts on it right in the?
Any big rocks that we need to, that are scheduled for the summer, or other, other years we've foregone, or forgotten? Some of the work sessions in the summertime?
It probably depends on what the state decides on that four days, I think, we.
I have work sessions, just for the sake of having work sessions, if I have any to discuss, so.
So we, you know, if we play by year, obviously, it sounds like, if we decide not to have a work session, what do we have to do to inform the public that that work session is not to be played, or seen? Is there a certain notice, a long time, I'm assuming?
I don't think there's a certain amount of time, we'll just put canceled on the website.
Okay. And that's because of the nature of the, doing the work sessions, the actual regular meeting and special meeting?
Meeting can be actually canceled at any time.
Oh. Okay.
Motion received. Here, are you, on that?
Yeah, yeah, I think, once we respond to the use, I'm trying to get some great work with the, send it over to myself. Rickerson, Carter, Peterson, and.
I think the dedication is great.
Yeah, yeah.
The new, uh.
New year.
The new year, when we started the funding, maybe numbers, we're on a personal committee able.
Yeah. But if you want to get some dates from you. Should we do it on a little form? Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll work, I'll put an ID on that and reach out to the union and see what, what their timeframe is looking like and what can stick together. You know, you were, you were like, yeah, as part of that. Typically, they have a chair, they're two, so I figured out how to have it on there, but I'm not going to be able to make that really even happen. I want certain notes, right?
Okay, I think, I want to, I could email it.
Well, entertaining, entertaining motion to adjourn. Should we, Greg, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brittany. Any discussion on adjouring? Any no discussion, all is in favor of adjouring, we will call again, Molly?
Aye.
Brittany?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Brenda?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.